Many of us, I appreciate it. And she requested that we...
Recording in progress.
That we just remove our masks while we speak because sometimes it doesn't come out.
Yes, please. I appreciate that.
So today is Wednesday, November the 3rd, 2021. Time is now at 6:00 PM. Regular meeting in the City Council of Trinidad will now come to order. Commissioner Thurlow, would you please give us some of the pledge of allegiance, please?
Leave us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
(Inaudible) flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a roll call, please?
DeBono?
Here.
Goodall?
Here.
Grago?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Shu?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Rico?
Here.
Item two approval of the agenda. Does council have any changes to the agenda tonight?
No motion.
Or entertain a motion?
I think we accept the agenda as stated.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
Call the vote?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item three, policy item and staff reports. Mr. Valentine, do you have anything to report from staff?
Nothing to report tonight, yes, my name.
Petitions or communications oral written. Do we have anybody signed up? Just wanted to say one thing while I'm getting that. For everybody's information, that Proposition 119 that we discussed, it did fail across the state, so that's something that we don't have to worry about.
Thank you, City Council, for allowing me the time to speak today. As you know, as all of you know, my patios came down, I've been quite vocal about that. And I'd like to go to the base of that problem. The base of that problem is a gentleman in a wheelchair here that we all know very well.
Just about five minutes, just to let you...
Can I please speak and not be interrupted for the rest of this, please?
Thank you so much.
I understand that. Please don't interrupt me again. But what we have here is we have Les Downs who has continually led this council astray. And the reason that this man has a vendetta against this town is because of that attorney and his lack of anything. He's horrible. Horrible advice that he's given you guys repeatedly, over and over again, from not being able to see through your words that you don't have enough legal counsel or the legal counsel to unravel what's going on in Cougar Canyon because it's such a quagmire. If you don't have the right legal counsel to do that, maybe you should get some new legal counsel. Because legal counsel that we have continually leads each and every one of you astray. Each and every one of you, with the exception of you, Aaron Ogletree, who's an attorney, should know better to not let an attorney run this city council meeting, which happens regularly. He is not an elected official here, yet you guys let him ramble on like he is. Shame on you guys for doing that. And shame on you guys for sitting by while each and every one of these patios continues to be shut down. You sat on your hands during the pandemic when the state was giving out half a million dollars to every community to put outdoor seating to every single person, and yet you guys did nothing. You guys did nothing. Now you guys have, now you guys are going through traffic studies and stuff, right? Traffic studies. Other municipalities are already doing, and we're taking away from struggling people. Is the pandemic over? Because by the look of all of your faces right now, doesn't look like it's over right now. The state of Colorado extended the period in which these patios can stay open, right? Why was mine terminated? You don't know that. None of you guys know that. You guys have no idea what's happening in your municipality, and it's sad. You're being led astray by somebody who doesn't know ADA rules, who continually loses in ADA cases, so much so that you have to have other attorneys come in. What are we paying this guy for? Here's my other question. Is conflict of interest, guys? Here we have somebody who sits on the marijuana advisement board, right? And to my knowledge, he also has these same clients and other things. Is that not a conflict of interest? Somebody who sits on the marijuana advisement board and somebody who makes a decision on stuff that happens to do with marijuana in this community and still representing other people, representing DUI cases, representing other legal land cases? Is that not a conflict of interest? Each and every one of you need to understand, and you know most of all, that that is a huge conflict of interest, but yet you guys continue to let it roll through. You guys continue to let it roll through like it's nothing. We've got nothing but horrible advisement from this man from years, yet you continue to employ him. He is the absolute thorn in the side of this community, and he is preventing us from moving forward. You guys need to look deep within yourselves to see what direction this brand-new city council has that is changing over. You had the lowest voter turnout ratio because people are fed up. We had one of the highest voter turnouts in the state not too long ago, and in the city government, we got nothing. But I mean, what did this really prove? You guys proved nothing, and it's business as usual with the same really poor attorney leading the exact same charge.
One minute.
In conclusion, I'd like you guys to look deep within yourselves and understand what's happening to your community right now. You need to get an attorney who understands ADA law and understands that as well. I've spent $10,000 and five revisions because somebody didn't know what they were doing, and it cost me money. And even though the state still allows it, my patio came down on Monday. Thank you for your time, Travis.
Thank you.
Mayor Rusty, great campaign. Great campaign. Really appreciate it. We kept it high level. I think we had some robust ideas out there, and I just wanted to say, I was really, I'm just pleased with the way that all went. Mike was great to me, the staff was outstanding when I had a question, and so just wanted to say thank you. I do want to serve it, though. So I did put in my citizen interest to the Planning, Zoning and Variance Committee, and I'd like to be considered in that. I do believe I have experience, and I believe I've demonstrated the ability to work with people and be productive and constructive. Lastly, this does have to do with ADA. Just want to push one more idea out there, because I tried to work with Mr. H several times during this campaign, just to sit down and was there any way to try and find some kind of way that that could be worked through a little bit more so that more things could affect more people. I just don't, I think the ADA has been weaponized by that individual. And I want to say again that a task force, very specific in task, made up of other people that have, that are stakeholders, that are disabled, that are trying to navigate the streets as well, would maybe be more reasonable, maybe a good idea to put that together, because I talk to many people that are disabled in the area or have worked in that area, and they're not to that degree. They're not fanged, they just want to have a good opportunity to get around our great city. And so I think there's reasonableness there. And so I just want to say again that I would love for that idea to get some kind of, not a committee, a task force with a task, a specific time, bring people together. I think it would show intent, and intent is important a lot of times in these issues. The intent that we actually do want to do something to the effects of the ADA. Again, main thing is just gratitude and appreciation. Thanks so much, all.
Thank you. Tom Murphy?
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. Congratulations. As an observer of politics here for a very long time, I think it was a very interesting race. The good thing is that we have very good qualified people that are running for office. And so I've observed some not-so-good councils, and I'm impressed. And where we were 10 years ago as to where we are today, it's a huge leap, and it's because of the people sitting up here. You've all contributed, and I'm really proud of this city at this point. My big announcement, and I shared it on Facebook, tomorrow, now I know for some of you people it's not a big deal because you've been here your whole life, 40 years, 40 years that we came here. And my first impression when we came in on Main Street, coming down there and saw the house for the first time, I was like, because it looked like the Munsters' house or the Adder's house. I'm like, what have you done? And so it's been an adventure. And I know with my television stuff, there's some things that I've learned in life. I've had some extreme criticism against me through the years, some published by people. At one point, I had a city and district court judge call for a boycott of my business, which was tough. And as much as you want to react to that, just as maybe Mr. Downs wants to, you've got to learn that what you don't feed dies, because I can give you a number of examples where it was published, and I just didn't respond. Now, this last thing I wasn't going to speak about, but based on what the previous speaker said, I'm going to contradict that. I've known Mr. Downs for a very long time, very long time. And I've expressed my gratitude because I think where the city is, and this is in my book, but where the city is right now, I observed several attorneys previously, a couple of them would have talked the city out of passing marijuana. And I don't think people understand the ramifications of what Mr. Downs did in guiding the city, because there are other lawyers that could have easily said, "Don't do this, this is a bad idea," and a lot of communities haven't done that. And we have to reflect on the reality that the marijuana money has made a difference in this community. I was here when Mr. Riori said, "Find this money." And the council was working on it, as they explained to me, but Mr. Downs guided the way. And so my hat is off to him, you know? I understand, we both take a lot of criticism. I was going to come up here and talk about what I was criticized about, but I thought, whatever you don't feed dies. And so for now, I'm going to let that go. But as someone who's been here, and I can probably count on two hands the number of meetings I've missed in 16 years, my hat's off to Mr. Downs for what he's done, and the staff and this council, because it's hard for you guys to take time out of your lives and come up here, because I know what you guys get, you know, as far as calls and everything else, it's not easy. And no matter what you do, somebody's not going to agree with it. But, you know, 39 and 364 days years later, it's like, I'm proud to be part of this community, and my plan is to be a part of it for a long, long time. And we may not agree on a lot of things. I mean, I've got some big issues on some things. I had to go to court with Mr. DeBono's father and Mr. Downs, you know, 10 years ago. I mean, they were on my team, so it was a good thing. And I've anchored some people. So that's the part about a small town, it's kind of like high school never ended, because some of us are never going to let, you know, the past go. But I think you're all wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Item number five, consent agenda approval. Item A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of October the 19th, 2021. There's one item on there, just led you, just minor typo. It is, on the seventh line from the bottom, it says assessed, and it should be assessed. That's all.
Oh, okay.
Item B, approval of special events permit, malt, vinous and spirituous filed by Benevolent and Protective Order of the Alps Lodge 181 at 120 South Maple Street on November the 13th and the 20th, 2021. Mr. Chavis, is Mr. Chavis with us tonight? Do you, does council feel like you're more in agreement with that or strike that item?
I thought we were...
Have a ruling that they have to be...
Let's go ahead and start from that end there. Any thoughts on that? Do you want to let it go through, or do you want us to make sure that they show up?
I would say let's follow our previous decision.
Okay.
I think so.
I'd require them to be here, especially on something like this. They should have showed up.
Okay.
The only concern is that they may not get here in time for us to approve a special event on November 15th. Will there be another meeting in time for that?
We could have a special meeting on Monday if necessary. Mr. Valentine, any thoughts? Were they informed that they need to be here?
Yes, they were. I'm going to defer to Audra. Do we have enough noticing time if we carry this forward to Monday?
If council tables it to Monday, because it's been posted for tonight's meeting. Yeah, let's see.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear from you.
It was posted for tonight's meeting? And I will tell...
It's... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, Audra. It's a lot of work for staff to post and to do everything, to, you know, do what they need to for impending liquor losses. I don't know if I'm going to say it's a lot of work, but it's, I've been involved, and I understand the rule. I would just ask council to please consider letting this go through, because in a short period of time, who the applicant is, and just so it doesn't have to be reposted. Bearing in mind the rule, and I know this keeps happening, but I assure you, people are informed, I'm just not sure they understand the need and the requirement for being here or having some kind of presence, what it's called upon the jury.
Are they told that they have to be here?
They are.
I mean, I'm just asking.
Yes, they are.
If you would like to answer the phone call right now and ask them to join, and let them know, if they don't join, it's just, it's going to be passed on.
Go ahead and make that call real quick. We'll hold for a second. Do they have to be physically present or can they do this?
No, I think it's okay if they...
Is it okay with them? For tonight, yes. Okay.
Not for the public hearing part, there was one...
Of course, of course. That precedent has been established, I think, yes.
Do we want to advance the agenda, maybe do that? Yeah, let's go ahead and do that. Let's go on to item C, approval of the bills for $1,630,448.62. Item D, approval of the payroll, October the 30th, 2021 through November the 12th, 2021, in the amount of $414,219.56.
Mayor, Mr. Chavis is going to call now to represent the Alps.
Okay. Is somebody on there?
Yes, I can see him.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that somebody was actually present to affirm that we have someone listening in from the Alps Lodge, and who are we speaking with? Jane, Jane Chavis? He's probably muted, but at least we can see that he's on here, so we'll go ahead and move forward. So that was approval of the special events permit, malt, vinous, spirituous filed by the Benevolent and Protective Order of the Alps Lodge 181 at 120 South Maple Street on November the 13th and the 20th, 2021. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, please. Second. Call vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Garrett, for making that call. Item six, public hearings. 6A, new fermented malt beverage liquor application filed by Family Dollar Stores of Colorado LLC, doing business as Family Dollar, 22942 at 2102 Freedom Road. Hearing is now open. Would you please come forward, and would you please swear them in?
You'll raise your hand. You swear in front of the testimony or against the truth, the whole truth, and that they can get your...
Yes. Could we have your names, please?
Good evening. My name is Brandon Sandberg. My attorney registration number is 42507. I'm with the law firm of Dil Dil Car, Stonebreaker and Hutchings. Present with me is Jacob Byrd, he is the district manager of the applicant, and Elliot Sandoval, she is the manager of the applicant. I want to thank you all very much for your time and having us this evening.
Okay. Just have to turn it over to Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Good evening. I know I was letting you know a few of the questions that I was going to be asking of you, so please just let me know if I ask any questions that don't make sense, or if you want to confer with council, anything of that nature, please, okay? So you are here this evening representing Family Dollar Stores of Colorado LLC, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And Family Dollar Stores of Colorado LLC is the applicant limited liability corporation, is that right?
It is a limited liability company, yes, and it is the applicant in this case. Yes, sir, that's right.
And I will be asking you a few other questions about the corporate form, Mr. Sandberg, but thank you. And so we know this is going to be, I mean, you do business as Family Dollar, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor, one thing I overlooked, and I should have done at the beginning, and that is Councilman DeBono is going to disqualify himself in this hearing, and I would just ask everyone to please simply accept that and just know that Councilman DeBono won't be voting on this, okay? You with me, Councilman DeBono?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't mean to talk about you like you're not here. Thank you. I understand. I just wanted to get that taken care of. So, and you recently, I believe in 2017, there was a conversion of the corporate form, right? It went from Family Dollar Stores of Colorado Inc. to Family Dollar Stores of Colorado LLC?
It did go from a corporation to an LLC, and that was part of the application, yes.
Okay, thank you. And the location of this is at 2102 Freedom Road in Trinidad?
Correct.
Okay. And that's community commercial zoning, is that also correct?
That's my understanding, sir.
Okay. So let me ask you, if I could, please, to kind of let all of you, you know, talk and give us a, give council a bit of information. Why is Family Dollar, you know, now wanting to sell beer if this license application is approved, and what is the model and what is the plan, please?
Thank you. If I can give an overview, then with the mayor and council people's permission, I can have testimony for my clients to go through some questions about who we are, what we're doing, our training, our policies and procedures, if that would be acceptable?
Sure.
Thank you. There are, I think, three main reasons why Family Dollar is doing this. This has happened over the last couple of years. This is the ninth public hearing that I've been at for a location that is trying to get a fermented malt beverage off-premise license. It's really for three reasons. I think number one is it's a convenience factor. Family Dollar prides itself on being a one-stop shop, and this furthers that. Number two is that there's continuity, to have the same products available at Trinidad as they would find at a Colorado Springs store. And there's a push in the state and around the nation for Family Dollar to have liquor licenses and to pursue them. As I mentioned before, there have been eight applications that have been filed in Colorado. All eight of those have already been approved. They're in Aurora, Colorado Springs, Calhan, Yuma and Ignacio. And there have been various hearings for those, I believe six or seven in total. The third reason is really customer demand, wanting to provide what our customers are requesting and what they're demanding, and to be able to do that is very important. So with Mr. Mayor, with the council people's permission, I would like to call a couple of people. We do have Eva Garretson, I believe that she is on the line here. She is from Liquor Pros. She did the petitioning in the case, so she can talk a little bit about the needs and desires and the evidence that she was able to gather. So with your permission, can I call her?
Mr. Sandberg, would you give me her last name again? I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry, Garretson?
G-A-R...
You said to remove this, and I missed that. I apologize. It's Garretson, G-A-R-R-E-T-S-O-N.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
And Ms. Garretson, are you on the line? If you are on the line, you are on mute.
It does not look like, do you have someone else that you have?
Well, there's two phone numbers there that are calling, it could be one of those.
Star six, may on mute. Star six.
I have her number while I have Mr. Byrd testify. I don't mean to be rude. Can I shoot her a message?
Sure.
Just to try and speed this along. I apologize. With that, though, let's have Mr. Byrd testify. Mr. Byrd, if you could please come up, sir. Mr. Byrd, can you please state your name and spell your name for the authority?
Yeah, so Jacob Byrd.
Would you mind?
Oh, excuse me.
So let's speak to the mic, please.
Yeah, so it's Jacob Byrd, J-A-C-O-B, last name is F-E-R-D.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. How are you associated with the applicant, in this case, Family Dollar?
So I'm the district manager. I oversee 16 stores between Colorado and New Mexico.
And what are your duties and responsibilities as the district manager?
So I oversee about 100 associates and 16 SAD members of management in the operation of their stores. I just maintain, you know, a certain standard within our stores so that our customers have the best experience possible.
How long have you been a district manager for Family Dollar?
Two months and a week.
That's very specific. Prior to being the district manager with Family Dollar, where did you previously work?
So most recent was with Comingo. I was a general manager and train store manager. So I oversaw five stores and the training of their entire staff. We sold, you know, both beer and tobacco products, so H R by products. I did that for about three and a half years. And then prior to that, I was with Sam's Club in various roles. And I started with them at 19 as a card attendant and worked my way up to a fresh assistant manager. So various roles and responsibilities within that organization.
And as part of your roles and responsibility as a district manager, does that include implementing and verifying that policies and procedures are followed by our associates?
Most definitely. Yeah, so we, so my biggest thing today is going in and, you know, ensuring that our team is operating at standard operating procedures set out by our company. So if that's, you know, checking IDs, if that's, you know, wearing a uniform, if that's greeting our customers correctly, I'm making sure we're doing all of those steps in a correct way.
How often are you in this Trinidad location?
Every two weeks, between my 16 stores. I, 632 miles of travel between my 16 stores, so I try to make a point to be in the Trinidad location every two weeks.
How often are you in communication with the management team in Trinidad?
I would say every day, not twice a day, following up.
The Sandoval's not...
Not twice a day.
And when were you most recently in the store?
Today.
Let's talk about, what do you typically do when you're in the store? What happened today?
So when I walk in, I usually walk in and, you know, greet the associates, greet the customers that are there, and then I do a walkthrough. And what that intention initially entails as I'm walking through to make sure items are in the right spot, our schematics or layouts are in the right order, make sure product is, you know, not in incorrect locations, making sure our associates are following procedures and ensuring, you know, the job is being done correctly.
For those that have not been to a Family Dollar specifically here in Trinidad, how would you describe it?
It's a family-oriented business. You know, we pride ourselves on having everything possible available for a family, you know, from toilet paper to canned goods to soda chips, you know. It may be a shopping experience where they're buying all their groceries at once, or it may be a one-stop shop where they're looking to, you know, get ready for the tailgate. So providing ice and water and things to those natures.
Mr. Sandberg, I'm sorry for interrupting. Could I please just, if I could, I think I can save a little bit of time, and this is one of... is wonderful, I just think that council would probably like to have this abbreviated. I don't need to interrupt, I don't need to hijack this.
What I'd like to see is more questions towards the reasons, you know, for the liquor license.
I'm sorry, or their knowledge of the liquor laws and what they're going to do to enforce that, is that what we'd like to hear?
Thank you for the direction, I appreciate it.
I'm sorry.
No, that's helpful, I do appreciate that. Mr. Fern, you mentioned one-stop shopping. Why is Family Dollar proceeding with this application for a fermented malt beverage off-premise license? What are some of those reasons?
So one of the reasons is the main point, one-stop shop, or grocery store. We also provide various products from cups to lids to napkins, party accessories. So being able to provide that customer that one less shopping experience and being able to stay in our store and buy the products they need, that's what we're trying to get after.
Is it also important to have the same products at this location as other locations?
Yes, most definitely. Like Mr. Sandberg explained, we have eight stores that are trying to sell beer or are selling beer. You know, we're trying to expand that into, you know, a bigger outlook.
And finally, what about demand? Are you receiving a request from your customers?
Yes, so some of the customers that are in from out of state, or they're traveling through, or they're camping here, you know, they've, I've specifically been in the store and they've asked, you know, why don't you guys sell beer? And, you know, something to tell them, hey, we're working on it, you can see the sign in the front door. But, you know, being able to drive that business as best we can.
Sir, the last couple of subjects I want to talk with you about are going to be the training specific to alcohol products, as well as the policies and procedures. So will you please describe the training that our associates go through and give specific attention to age-restricted products such as fermented malt beverages?
Yeah, so we do multiple different kinds of trainings. So every associate, when they get onboarded, they, or their first day, they go through a computer-based training. It's an age-verified training, so they review tobacco and alcohol and various IDs that they're allowed to accept and not accept. And then we, excuse me, we also do role play. So, you know, myself, or Ellie, or one of her assistant managers, they will role play with the cashier or vice versa to make sure that the products that they are selling are, you know, to the right people. You know, if that means I'm coming in and acting like I have a, you know, I don't have an ID, or I'm under age, you know, trying to give those experiences so they can make the best informed decision when selling their products.
Finally, if we could talk about your liquor policies and procedures, specifically carding. Who do you card?
We card everyone. So it doesn't matter if you're a hundred, if you're, you know, twenty-one, we card you. You know, the rule, the bond card, I'd say it's thirty years of age or never you have to be ID'd. I tell my associates to just ID everyone. It just makes life easier, it makes it, you know, it makes it so you don't make a mistake. Our policy is pretty cut and dry. If someone doesn't ID and they, you know, do end up selling to somebody underage, or they do have a sting, they are terminated immediately. You know, there's no repercussions, there's no, or there's, excuse me, there is a repression, they're terminated, but there's no, well, I made a mistake. It's a, there's nothing you can do.
And we do not accept Colorado vertical IDs, is that correct?
Not at all.
Okay. And then finally, does the POS system or point-of-sale system, does that also have identifiers or indicators, reminders?
Yeah, so there's two different kinds. So you can scan the ID, or you can type in the date of birth. You know, they're trained on ways to tell if an ID is fake or not. And, you know, usually it's the identification number, the date of birth, the expiration date, stuff to those natures, they're able to identify correct IDs.
And then is our staff going to be trained to monitor where the fermented malt beverages are going to be maintained?
Yes. So our fermented malt beverages are going to be located in a very distinct location. You can see them from, as soon as you walk in the store. If you were to walk into the Family Dollar right now, you could see the location of where they're going to be. They're also on video camera monitors in two various locations. So I can view them from the front of the store on the public view monitor, or you can review in the back of the store in the manager's office.
And they're located by the register, is that correct?
Correct.
Does the authority have any questions for Mr. Fern?
I don't think so, no, at this time, unless Mr. Downs has anything.
No, I do not.
Have you got another lady, I guess, that you wanted to speak?
Yes, with your permission.
And I wouldn't want you to go through the whole process again.
I would not.
If there's anything different.
I would not. That's why Ms. Sandoval's here, if you have any questions for the store manager, but I won't, I won't go through her testimony. Thank you. Ms. Garretson, are you there?
Yes, sir, I am.
Ms. Garretson, can you?
Oh, sorry, I just wanted to make sure you could hear me.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have to be sworn?
Um, yes, please, thank you.
Will you raise your right hand? Do you swear in the testimony or about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Ms. Garretson, can you please introduce yourself and spell your name for the authority?
Yes. So for the record, my name is Eva Garretson, last name is G-A-R-R-E-T-S-O-N. I am one of the owners of Liquor Licensing Professionals, doing business as Liquor Pros, and we are a survey company, providing surveys for liquor and marijuana licenses throughout the entire state of Colorado. And we're also listed under Liquor Enforcement Division as a responsible vendor trainer for the state.
Ms. Garretson, how long have you been with Liquor Pros?
I've actually been with Liquor Pros now going on seven and a half, almost eight years.
Approximately how many petitions have you been a part of?
I have been a part of two thousand.
Were you retained, was your company retained by the applicant in this case to do the petitioning?
Yes, sir, it was.
And does your company guarantee specific results?
No, sir, we do not, no. We're an unbiased service company, independent of the applicant. We simply provide the survey. We remain as unbiased as possible, and the applicant basically gets what they get.
And Ms. Garretson, can you please describe the process and the results in this case specifically?
Sure. So prior to the start of the survey, and thanks to the help, wonderful help of Ms. Audra, we are provided with the information regarding the license and a map of the city of Trinidad. Prior to it, our surveyors are briefed on the type of liquor license that is being applied for. In this case, it's a new fermented malt beverage off-premise license, which basically means it's just, it's beer or fermented malt beverage. So that's what we, we want to make sure that we make clear to the community, business owners, managers, and residents inside the area. Prior to the survey, our circulators are also taught, or they both have, they have both business and residential signature sheets. On the top of the sheet has the applicant's business name, the location, hearing information, including the Zoom meeting information, the city clerk's office number, instructions and the issue, along with signature sheets, a map, and we sign affidavits at the conclusion of the survey. Once we are done, we actually turn in all petition packets into the city. Until then, they are under my personal care.
Ms. Garretson, can you please describe the survey results here?
Yes, sir. So we conducted the survey on Thursday, October 21st and Monday, October 25th. We actually started in closest to the site located at 2102 Freedom Road, started in with the businesses, and then focused most of our effort onto the residents just to the west of there. We actually also contacted the other retail liquor store inside that area, which if you'll notice, she is one of the signatures on my petition, business petition packet. So we did contact her as well, letting her know that there is another off-premise license that is being, that wants to go in and around the area. Checking once again of those residents, and then we grabbed samples in and around Trinidad, starting with Main Street, and then just grabbed some residential signatures in there. We were able to obtain a total of a hundred and six signatures, forty-four were from business owners and managers, forty-one signed in favor at ninety-three percent, and three were opposed at seven percent. And then we were able to obtain a total of sixty-two residential signatures, fifty signed in favor at eighty-one percent, twelve opposed at nineteen percent. We do have a spot on our petition packets where we ask the men to write in why they are in favor or opposed to this particular license. That way we could provide the authority with more information in their own words, why they are in favor or opposed to this license. On page two, you will see that the results, the reasons for opposition signatures, nine of them declined to provide a reason, three stated that there were homeless, or it would attract homeless or drunk people in the area, two stated enough or too many, and one stated no need, for a total of fifteen. If we combine those totals, just the raw numbers of that, we actually have eighty-six percent signing in favor with ninety-one signatures, and fourteen opposed with fifteen. On page two, once again, if there is case law that actually states that if the opposition signatures don't necessarily speak to the needs and desires, the authority may allow those to be irrelevant or invalid. So what we do is we also give those results, which actually bumps that up to eighty-eight percent signing in favor at ninety-one signatures, and twelve percent opposed with twelve signatures. Typically with a retail liquor store license, it's one of those things where everybody wants one, they just don't want it in their area. The numbers we usually see for this one is usually about high seventies, low eighties. This one's actually ranging on the higher end. Those folks on that corner, especially just to the west neighborhood area, stated that they wanted something a little bit closer, and were hoping that there was going to be a competitive pricing that went on. So eighty-eight percent in that area, yeah, was pretty high for this one.
And Ms. Garretson, finally, based on your extensive experience, what do these results say regarding needs and desires?
The eighty-eight percent to me still says that there is a favorable need and desire for this particular license, and that the needs and desires of a fermented malt beverage have not yet been met by the existing outlets.
Thank you, Ms. Garretson. For the authority, I would request that the petitioning results be part of the packet that you are considering, if you have any questions for Ms. Garretson.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Downs?
I do not, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, let's go ahead and start with council, any questions? Mr. Williamson?
I have no questions specifically.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Goodall?
I have nothing, thank you. It's a very good application, and the testimony you brought along has been very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
I reviewed everything carefully, and I was concerned that there was some pushback because seriously, we don't get any kind of knows on liquor license applications, but it wasn't overwhelming, and it does seem like the community wants it.
No, I don't have any questions, but I'd like to say that since you guys read on the story and that it really looks good, it's really impressive, it really cleaned it up, and I think it's really good for Trinidad to have place clean like that.
Thank you. Ms. Sandoval takes a lot of pride in that, so thank you.
Ms. Green?
I don't know if I missed it, but did you mention anything about the employees being tips certified?
Nothing.
So we have an internal training program that our staff goes through.
Is it an equivalent to the tips training?
It's not a state certified, it's their internal program, and they do have licenses elsewhere, and they, to my knowledge, have not had any violations in the state of Colorado at eight other locations.
Mr. Downs, is that qualified?
It does, Mayor. And Mayor, if I could please, when you called on me, I thought you were kind of asking about the petition and the testimony you just heard. I do have a few more follow-up questions, if I could please, to conclude. May I?
Yeah, go ahead, Neil.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you, Mayor, I didn't mean to.
That's fine, to come ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Sandberg, if I could please, I think you can answer my questions. But I want to be clear, Family Dollar Stores of Colorado LLC, the people that make up that LLC are Peter Barnett, Roger Dean, and Sandra Boshia, correct?
The way I would say is that the one-hundred percent owner of the applicant is Family Dollar Inc. The people that are disclosed are the officers, which are the three that you just mentioned, which are part of a master file that's been accepted by state.
Fair distinction. So even though this is in an LLC, there are shareholders and three officers that are listed in the application, correct?
I believe they are listed as officers, if I could please look.
Did I, no, I meant to say officers, what did I say?
You said shareholders and officers.
Okay, no, I'm sorry, okay. There is one shareholder, which is Family Dollar Stores Inc., and three officers.
This is just a minor distinction, I don't believe that would be a shareholder, they are the one-hundred percent manager, remember, is the Family Dollar Inc.
Well, if you'll bear with me, I will refer you to the application that was submitted, and maybe it's just semantics, but in the application that was signed by Roger Wayne Dean, his vice president and treasurer, it lists Mr. Barnett as the president, and Mr. Dean is the vice president and treasurer, Ms. Boshia's the assistant secretary, and Family Dollar Inc. is the one-hundred percent shareholder.
My mistake, then, I must have missed out.
Okay, well, and it's important, because I understand that we have the district manager and the store manager, but we need to know who is making up the license itself, right? I mean, they're not the licensees, and I understand it is Family Dollar Stores of Colorado LLC.
Correct.
So we need to know who makes that up, right?
And what makes that up is Family Dollar Inc., which is the one-hundred percent owner. And then above that is a Family Dollar Stores Inc., and then Dollar Trade Inc., which is, I believe, a publicly traded company, it's on asset.
Here's my concern, and here's what I'm not getting an answer to. If we have a liquor violation, who do we call? I mean, who do we say, you're about to lose your liquor license? I don't think it's the store manager and the district manager, right? We need someone who is literally on the liquor license, who makes up a corporation, who is a responsible party for the liquor license. Does that make sense?
It, it does. And liquor licenses are not issued to individuals, they are issued to entities. If there is a liquor violation that is filed, in my experience, whether it's from the state or local, it is going to be sent to the, the place of business, and a lot of times it's also sent to the mailing address.
Okay, okay. So your testimony, and the answer you're giving is that three officers, one shareholder, that's who makes up Family Dollar Stores of Colorado LLC, and that's who's responsible, is the corporate entity, right, of the LLC?
Correct, yes, sir.
All right. So, and there are no directors in this LLC, correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And, all right, so the landlord, and let me just kind of switch gears, and that is, the landlord in this instance is DF Nickerson LLC, correct?
Yes, sir.
The principal being Mr. Nick Nickerson?
I believe that's who is on the lease.
Okay. And as you know, Mr. Sandberg, I had a question from a council member, and that is, it is not prohibited, I'm sorry that's a double negative, but it's not prohibited that Family Dollar be selling liquor, right? It said in the lease, no serving of alcohol, right, in the addendum to the lease?
Correct, I agree with that, yes, sir.
Okay. So would you please speak to that? And that is, your interpretation of whether or not this license would involve selling alcohol?
Absolutely. I think the distinction is that phrasing. The lease says you cannot serve alcohol, there's no serving of alcohol in selling. Serving would be on-premise consumption. That's a bar, that's a restaurant. People are getting the malt beverage, fermented malt beverages to go. There is no serving in selling. So I do think that's a very important distinction.
Okay. And then one other thing, and I'm about done, but that is, the background checks that are normally, that are done is part of a liquor license application to show that the applicants are of good moral character, kind of going back to my earlier point, but those background checks are on a state Department of Revenue master file, correct?
That's correct, because there are more than five liquor licenses to this applicant in the state of Colorado.
Okay, but the three who have done the background checks are the three that I mentioned previously on the master file, correct? Peter Barnett, Roger Dean, and Sandra Boshia.
Correct. There was a phone call made to state today to verify that Mr. Barnett did pass through. State said yes, and that they are issuing an updated master file that has his name specifically listed.
Thank you. And that, sir, is because he's replacing another individual, a person by the name of Erfin Badabong?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. But those three people have been deemed to be of good moral character for purposes of having a liquor license and are part of the approved master file.
To be able to have a master file, they were qualified, that is correct, yes, sir. And that is part of the background investigation that is done by state.
Okay, thank you. And so, last couple of questions, and I will ask these of, I guess, Mr. Fern and Ms. Sandoval, and that is, you both understand that you were required to cooperate with all city officials if this, if this license is approved, right? And I'll go with that. So the chief of police, the city manager? So the chief of police, the city manager, city clerk, city attorney, you have an ongoing obligation to cooperate with everybody, you understand that?
Yes.
And you have training, and you will continue to keep training regarding not selling to minors, I know you've already testified to that, and also not selling to visibly intoxicated people, correct?
Correct.
You understand, if you have a violation, council's only recourse may be to revoke your liquor license?
Correct.
Okay. And you are familiar with the liquor codes of the state of Colorado and the city of Trinidad?
I have discussed with them. You cannot sell to visibly intoxicated, you cannot sell to minors. I do always give my card, so if they have any questions on any of the law, they know that they can contact me before doing anything.
Thank you. And Mr. Sandberg, my last question, I believe, and that is, there now has to be a showing that there isn't a, another liquor establishment of this type within five hundred feet of where you're located, per section forty-four-three-four-oh-nine CRS. To your information and belief, okay, thank you, Mr. Fern is nodding, he's heading.
It's five hundred feet from a retail liquor store.
Gotcha, thank you. But there isn't a retail liquor store within five hundred feet?
I drove by and got my water from the store before I came here, and I did not see one of them.
All right, thank you, thank you. Mayor, council members, I have no further questions.
I have no questions, however, I do have an opinion, but I wanted to express my concern to council, is this, you know, the information we received was quite extensive, and I understand it, that's all well, and it's good, a lot of all the information, but the concern that I have is for the little individual mom and pops, and it just seems like throughout the time that I've been on council, we've approved some other liquor licenses, and I was just doing some figuring in my mind just now, and there is probably one liquor store in Trinidad for every thousand people or less, okay, in Trinidad right now. And my concern is, at what point do all of our small liquor stores, the mom and pops, that have struggled because they put money out of their own pocket to make a business work, at what point do they go out of business? And that is my concern. And I don't know if that's something that corporations really take into account. So that's an opinion that I have, just wanted to stress my opinion.
Am I allowed to respond to that, sir?
Sure.
Thank you. The consideration for the authority is needs and desires, it's not based on competition. Needs and desires have been proven through the petitioning, the community wants this. We have testimony that our customers are requesting, it's members of this community that go to Family Dollar, it's members of this community that work for Family Dollar, that are employed by Family Dollar. We do appreciate that we are part of this community, I think we are good corporate citizens, I'm not sure if there's been any issues before, I'm not aware of any, but they are a good corporate citizen, so being able to give this community one-stop shop and give them the convenience, if the customers don't want to go there, they have other options, but denial based on concern over a mom and pop or a local, the authorities, and I'll obviously defer to your attorney to advise you, but it's needs and desires, good moral character, and I do believe that that's been proven here today, and it should be for the market to decide where they want to shop.
I understand that.
Is there anyone else in the audience or online that would speak for or against the application? Hearing none, hearing disclosed. A motion to approve, entertain a motion.
Subute.
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the vote?
DeBono.
I recuse my side.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grago?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes, with the reservations that I so stated.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you all for your time.
I need to get a clear, you have a finding, please?
Yes, sir.
And I know that you're already aware of this, but your clerk was fantastic to work with, just one of the older.
She has a meeting, the findings for you before you leave?
Understood, thank you.
This matter came on for hearing on the application of Family Dollar Stores of Colorado LLC doing business as Family Dollar, twenty-two-nine-four-two at twenty-one-zero-two Freedom Road in Trinidad, Colorado, for a new fermented malt beverage off-premises license, before the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, acting in its capacity as the local licensing authority on November third, twenty-twenty-one, in City Council chambers in City Hall. The City Council, having reviewed the application and supporting documents and reports of the city clerk and other city staff, petitions admitted into evidence at the hearing and testimony taken during the hearing, makes the following findings. The neighborhood consists of that area located within the city's corporate limits. Eva Garretson, Jacob Fern, Elliot Sandoval, all testified in favor of granting the license. No other persons testified in favor of or in opposition to granting the license. The city clerk's report showed that there are forty-two liquor licensed outlets within the neighborhood. Of these, there are five fermented malt beverage off-premises licenses, one fermented malt beverage on-premises license, one club license, fourteen hotel and restaurant licenses, six liquor store licenses, eight tavern licenses, one arts license, three beer and wine licenses, and three lodging and entertainment licenses. The applicant submitted petitions regarding the liquor license application. The petitions contained a hundred and three valid, correct?
Correct.
Total signatures, of which eighty-eight residents or business owners or managers from within the neighborhood, twenty-one years of age or older, in favor of the issuance of a liquor license at this location. And fifteen were residents or business owners or managers from within the neighborhood, twenty-one years of age or older, in opposition to issuance of a liquor license at this location. No remonstrances were submitted. The applicant, through testimony and other evidence, made a prima facie showing that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by existing liquor outlets, and that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license. Based on the evidence presented at the hearing and the investigative materials provided for the hearing, the City Council finds that the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood are not being met by the existing liquor establishments, that the adult inhabitants of the neighborhood favor issuance of the license to the applicant, and that the applicant officers are of satisfactory moral character. Therefore, the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, as the local liquor licensing authority, hereby approves the application of Family Dollar Stores of Colorado LLC doing business as Family Dollar number twenty-two-nine-four-two in Trinidad, Colorado.
Thank you for agreeing tonight, and good luck.
Thank you for your time, congratulations.
Thank you all, thank you, sir. Mr. Sandberg, thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody.
On item six-B, public hearing for consideration of ordinance amending the zone classification of property located at parcel two, Zeeches Track subdivision to the city of Trinidad, Colorado, from medium-density residential zoning to community commercial zoning. Hearing is now open. Do we have Mr. Zeeches here? Scott Zeeches, are you on the phone? If you are on the phone, star six will unmute you.
Mayor, we'd like to have a try and make phone calls.
Mr. Dowd, if we can't get him, do we, by table?
Yes, Mayor, I believe so, I wouldn't recommend you go forward.
Yes, sir.
This is the part where we should have a recording of the Jeopardy music to play.
That's right.
Break us a note, give the silence.
Do the song and dance.
We did that one time. You kind of liked the music.
I did it on my. Mayor, he's going to come in just a minute, he's about a minute away.
Okay.
What did he say?
He's a minute away, he's coming in.
Show me music.
Mayor, council member, shall I read the ordinance that we're considering now, assuming that.
Let's wait till he comes in.
Wait till he shows up.
Yes. Please. Why don't anybody go? Take the temporary break.
You is. Don't be discouraged, don't.
It's already happened.
This smooth. There you go, to the microphone.
Did you do that?
Yes.
Well done, councilman, nice, nice.
I watched Jeopardy.
Do you?
If you really want to feel stupid, watch Jeopardy.
I know, I know.
I got three out of ten last night. One category, wow, there's some tough questions.
I know, I know. And those guys that advance, yeah, for like a week at a time. Isn't that the show that Aaron Rodgers wanted to be a host of?
Yes.
Yeah. Man, it's a, it's a very popular show, isn't it, yeah? Do they have a host yet?
Yeah.
Yeah, lady.
The girl that was on, um...
I can't remember her name.
The Big Bang Theory.
The Big Bang Theory.
Oh, the scientist gal.
Yeah, she is an actual neuro.
I see, yeah, you're right. I'm actually a brain scientist.
Yes.
Yeah, wow.
I bet she's good. Yeah, but nobody can replace her.
I know, I know, he was, he was meant for that. So good. And he got, he had kind of a smile.
Right.
You got the impression that he knew.
Oh, yes, yeah.
I hope he helped that person.
Kimberly, how you doing?
I can't manage.
So everybody, we run out of here. We have two big bad decisions that will be, yes, that will be. I know, I'm sorry. Did you have a container of it under your, did you film?
I know, I do.
So why is it?
I don't know. She put it right there, and she stayed there.
It's wild, I'm telling you, they're walking. She freed up his body.
I was gonna toss it to you.
Yeah, I know. That looked good. That's right, I needed that. I mean, you think I do. I'm sorry, this is. I should have. I just don't know that we need to do that. I could just say, you're not here when you're all the first. I can't show a lot of people in the first place. That's right. No, surely we're one of the first. Yeah. Especially someone as important as Mr. Murphy. Yeah, hold up, Mr. Murphy, by the wayside, that ain't right.
Hey, right. He's like, oh, if you're later on the table.
Oh, jeez. Oh, Amber.
I think that's a, that's interesting.
They're looking for Scott.
I used to get it. The new salesman gets the old gentleman. Apologies. I'd go forward, if they have a seat there. I forgot, actually. Okay, that's going to resume the meeting, and you wanted to read the ordinance?
Yeah, this is the second reading of the ordinance, I'll just read it for the record. An ordinance amending the zoning classification of the property located at nineteen-eighty-six Santa Fe Trail, Trinidad, Colorado, from medium-density residential zoning to community commercial zoning. Whereas, Scott A. Zeeches Enterprises LLC has made application to the City Planning Zoning Invariance Commission and the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, for a change in zoning classification of the following described property, nineteen-eighty-six Santa Fe Trail, Trinidad, Colorado. Whereas, all notices have been posted pursuant to law, and whereas, a public hearing has been held by the City Council on the application for a change in zoning classification, and whereas, the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, finds that the proposed change in zoning classification of the above described property does not materially alter the city's zoning ordinance, Chapter fourteen land use code, and is in keeping with the comprehensive plan for the regulation of land uses within the city of Colorado. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, to the one. The zoning map of the city of Trinidad is hereby amended by changing the zoning classification of the above described property from the existing medium-density residential to community commercial. This zone change is made pursuant to, this zone change is made pursuant to Chapter fourteen land use code of the, of ordinances of the city of Trinidad, Colorado.
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Coleman. Mr. Zeeches, you want to come forward, please?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dowd, do you have any questions concerning?
I do not, no, no.
Let's go ahead and get any questions from counsel, Mr. DeBono?
I have none, Mr. Reddick.
Okay.
No, I have none.
Are you adding to the business to you, that you have there particularly, is that why you're changing the zoning?
No, sir. Because it was requested when I first bought the property that it was not platted, and I just said, "Sure, we'll plat the land," but I would like to change the zoning at that time. Right now I have no commercial plans for it, but I would say it's a whole lot easier to get funding for a commercial project when the land is already zoned. So that's kind of how I'm going at it.
Especially someone as important as Mr. Murphy. Yeah, hold up Mr. Murphy by misdeals. That ain't right.
Hey, right. He's like. Oh, jeez. Oh, Amber. They're looking for Scott.
I used to get all these stuff. The new salesman gets the old. Apologies. I'd go more to the.
Have a seat there.
Busy and I forgot. Actually. Okay, that's going to resume the meeting and you have, you wanted to read the ordinance?
Yeah, this is the second reading of the ordinance. I'll just read it in for the record. An ordinance amending the zoning classification of the property located at 1986 Santa Fe Trail, Trinidad, Colorado, from medium-density residential zoning to community commercial zoning. Whereas Scott A. Zeches Enterprises LLC has made application to the City Planning Zoning Invariance Commission and the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, for a change in zoning classification of the following described property. 1986 Santa Fe Trail, Trinidad, Colorado. Whereas all notices have been posted pursuant to law and whereas a public hearing has been held by the City Council on the application for a change in zoning classification and whereas the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, finds that the proposed change in zoning classification of the above described property does not materially alter the city's zoning ordinance, Chapter 14 Land Use Code, and is in keeping with the comprehensive plan for the regulation of land uses within the city of Colorado. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Trinidad, Colorado, to the one. The zoning map of the city of Trinidad is hereby amended by changing the zoning classification of the above described property from the existing medium-density residential to community commercial. This zone change is made pursuit, two. This zone change is being pursued to Chapter 14 Land Use Code of the, um, of ordinances of the City of Trinidad, Colorado.
Okay? All right. Thank you, Mr. Paulman. Mr. Zeches, you want to come forward, please?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Downs, do you have any questions concerning?
I do not, no.
Let's go ahead and get any questions from council. Mr. DeBum?
I have, I have none, Mr. DeBum.
Okay.
No, I have none.
Okay.
Are you adding to the business to you, that you have there particularly? Is that why you're changing the zoning?
Uh, no, sir. Because it was requested when I first bought the property that it was not platted. Then I just said, sure, we'll plat the land, but I would like to change the zoning at that time. Right now I have no commercial plans for it, but I would say it's a whole lot easier to get funding for a commercial project when the land is already zoned. So that's kind of how I'm going at it.
Makes sense.
I don't have any questions. I'm just excited that what you're doing is successful.
Mr. Goodall?
I have no questions.
Mr. Williamson?
Uh, I have no, uh, questions for Mr. Zeches. I did have a question in general. I understand this. I think it's a great idea. I, it's maybe curiosity more than anything. Where, where does this have to be posted? If, if you're a citizen in Trinidad, where would you see this posted?
I believe on the property.
So I'll, I'll answer that. So, um, we send notices to all of the adjacent property lines by certified mail and we publish it in a legal ad 10 days before the hearing in the Planning Zoning Commission.
Okay. I was, I was purely curious, but that answers every question I had.
Like I said, I do know that, I think that was a gas station at one time.
Yes, sir.
Everything been removed out of the?
Yes.
And just in the future, in case you decide to do something.
When I get to that process.
Sorry, didn't want to. Sorry. Many probably don't know this, but 25 years or 30 years ago, I was an environmental consultant in New York State. So brownfields was something I was very familiar with. Gas stations are often listed as a brownfield very unfairly. This property had the Phase One and the Phase Two inspections done. The tank is gone. The ground's been inspected. Absolutely clean. I wouldn't have touched it if it wasn't. And I would say, sorry, one more thing. I did take it all the way to the state of Colorado to make sure, just by telephone, hey, this is the document. Please look at it. Send it to them. Let's talk about it. Yep, everything's good.
Well, you know, I'm just glad to see that that property is being used because it, it stayed vacant for so many years and I just kept wondering, you know, is somebody going to be able to do something with it? And it's good to see that you're utilizing it.
Well, we may be able to use part of that, the field that I'm asking to rezone, just for parking. And it's probably better if we did that under a commercial ticket than as a residential ticket.
Any other questions?
Next time you come, bring pizza.
You saw how fast they got here, Frank? I'm gonna let, I'll let y'all know Frank's one of our best customers.
We can tell.
Anyone in the audience who wants to speak for or against the application?
Mayor, it's just a couple of clarifications on the ordinance that I'm sky read. It's been amended between first and second reading to include the legal description. Because City Council actually acted at the last council meeting on the subdivision class, the legal description is added to relocate parcel two Zeches Track subdivision. And then it's also in the body of the ordinance described, following described property, parcel two Zeches Track subdivision to the city of Trinidad, Colorado, also known as 1986 Santa Fe Trail, Trinidad, Colorado, eight one zero eight two. And then I also want to note that I have an overlay abbreviation in number one that will need to be removed. It should just bring two community commercial and number two it should just be CC, not T dash CC.
All right, you know, I did notice that, you know, it is now called the Zeches Track Subdivision and it wasn't on the original items, I think, when it was first brought to us a couple of weeks ago. Anyone listening in or in the audience wants to speak for or against the application? Hearing none. Hearing is now closed. Okay, item six B one, Sacral Indian of an ordinance amending the zone classification of property located parcel two Zeches. I guess I'm pronouncing that right.
Exactly.
Track subdivision to the city of Trinidad, Colorado, also known as C, as Colorado, or CO, at 1986 Santa Fe Trail, Trinidad, from medium-density residential zoning to community commercial zoning. entertain motion?
Will you?
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion from council? Call vote, please.
DeBum?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletr?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Good luck to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you for waiting for me. I'm sorry.
And item seven, unfinished business? We have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business? We are, we have none. Item nine, council report, starting with Mr. DeBum.
Well, I just have to mention Ray Odom from the Los Angeles County Veterans Council and Linda Bear came up yesterday for an interview for Veterans Day. They're gonna have their luncheon a week from tomorrow, 11:00 AM. Sebastianne Jim, Fort Carson Honor Guard will be there. And looking forward to, uh... To Veterans Day next Thursday.
It's always a nice day.
Always.
It is.
Anything else?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. Mr. DeBum?
I am on the Historic Main Street Board. We had a meeting yesterday and we're making a few changes. Before, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Audrey, but we had the business decorating contest before where we give the first place a thou, I think it was a thousand and then we went down. But that contest every year was costing the city $6,000 plus advertising. So Main Street Board has decided and staff helped us with this. We had a meeting of the minds here last week. Mr. Paulman was here. Kim was here. We, and Mike even made a short, his presence. But what we did is we ordered some new Christmas decorations for downtown to the tune of $13,000. And we decided it would be more favorable for every business to have the whole downtown decorated rather than give that money away for prize money. And I'm going to tell you ahead of time, we're probably gonna get criticism for the Christmas decorations because I'll tell you, I was floored at the prices for commercial lighting for Christmas. Some of those displays, and we're talking one light pole is like $2,000. So we had to do the best we could with our budget. So we did that and hopefully it, people will appreciate that we invested that money that way. Also, just kind of on a personal note, I have re-upped to be on the board of Noah's Ark Animal Welfare Association and I waited because I didn't want to have any conflicts with the shelter building, but I will promise council, mayor, mayor and council, that any time a question comes up regarding Noah's Ark, I will refuse myself and I promise all of you, I will not try and talk you into doing it. And, you know, I'm just gonna keep the two positions that I hold completely separate. But it's, if you know me, and I'm sure all of you do, that's some cause that's very near and dear to my heart. That's it.
Okay. Shu?
On the Christmas decorations, we set some money aside. Are we using that?
Correct.
And that's, I think that was a good thing that we should do every year is put some of that away and then advance every year. I mean, Ractone does a really good job on their light poles. I don't know exactly what you, you ordered or anything like that, but.
It's a surprise.
Okay. Sounds good to me, but as long as it works.
Power and Act, are we gonna be able to do something on this end of Main Street?
Yes.
Because that's quite, that's a question I've got, I've had for some of these.
Right. I've had a couple of problems. People are upset because right there, the intersection of Santa Fe Trail and Main Street, when most people come in for the holiday season, there's nothing there. So we're gonna, we're gonna focus a lot of, um, we focused a lot of the money on that intersection, on the Park Park down on Commercial Street and over here by Taco Bell and the Roundabout, where those, those insetts are in, that we, we will be able to put decorations in there that won't be obstacles to, to, yeah, traffic or people.
And I'm sure all the lighting that you got at Valley Beach, right?
Yes, and well, I, I, I'm glad you asked me that because we've had problems with, um, not problems, we've had complaints because of the white lights on the trees downtown. There's some of them work, some of them don't. Some of them are strung well. Well, Power and Light told us that the reason they have problems with that is because we have squirrels in the trees and they eat all the lighting. So what we're gonna do, instead of doing the lighting in the, in the top of the tree, we're gonna light the trunk from the, the umbrella of the tree down. Hopefully the squirrels keep away from it, but we're gonna do that as well. And maybe if we have money closer to tourist season, maybe we can embellish that as well.
Okay. Any else?
Yes.
I just have a little bit. Arts and Culture is working on finalizing the plaques that are gonna be for the public art tour that they're creating. And I noticed that Circle F is up over here by Soloyas, which is granted for that involved staff, so thank you for helping them get that done.
I have nothing tonight.
Williamson?
Just one, one quick thing. I attended the library board meeting. It's really nice to see the enthusiasm that exists there and the professionalism and it's, it's such a, it's interesting to go there. I haven't been there in a lot of years, but I would just say if, if people haven't been there in a long time, they really should drop by and see all the new things going on that they have there. It's really refreshing and I think they're doing a great job over there, so that's all.
You know, I've been to the library a couple of times, just going through there, just to see what it looks like and they've done a good job. The new director, you know, has a good focus on it as to the direction she wants to take it.
Has a lot of energy for books.
Okay. I mean, in the last few weeks, like I said, I've always been, I've been giving a COVID report because, um, I wish that the health department would actually post this on a weekly basis when they get it, but they don't. Just to let you know that cumulative cases to date have been 1,957. There's 149 active cases. There have been 22 deaths due to COVID-19. For some reason or another, did not come through where it had, um, I kind of always refer the various, the different variants. I didn't get that part of the report this time around, but usually I do know that the Delta variant has been the most, you know, has been the highest. It's almost 100% at this point in time. There has been 16,320 COVID-19 vaccine, vaccine doses administered to Los Angeles County residents ages 12 plus. 68.6% of eligible residents have received at least one dose, ages 12 plus, fully immunized have, are 62.6. So they're making some headway as far as vaccinations. There's still another 37% left to go, so, but we're, they're gaining ground. A couple of weeks ago, like I said, we had a CPW was down and did tours and I know I was there and.
I didn't get to go because I was sick.
And I know you were gonna go.
I had to cancel.
You had to cancel.
That's when my knee blew out.
Uh, but anyway, they had two or three of these tours available to council and it was interesting because we went and we spent, it was an all-day thing from like 8:00 till like 5:30 in the evening. And the whole idea is to get some additional ideas or to, if there's any ideas that have been out there, Mr. Valentine was on that tour with me. And at the end of the day, we kind of sat down and talked about all of it because there were, I think there were like four or five different vehicles that we all went in. So we all got together and kind of talked about what was, what was discussed and what we thought of. The whole idea is coming up on the 11th, 5:30, I believe, they're going to be back down and we're going to cover everything that was discussed that day. So it's gonna be, I think, a one or a couple hour meeting. So hopefully that everybody can go. It's open to the citizens of Trinidad, so it's, it's open to anybody who wants to hear what's going on with Fishers Peak and some of the ideas. Because one of the ideas, like I said, is that the master planning process, this will, this maybe will probably kind of, uh, put it all together, begin to put it all together so that they could bring the final report to the leadership group by January and then the leadership group will approve the, the master plan. Also, last week, the new, Tim Wolf, he's the new director for the tourism out of Denver and he was here and when I met with him, I guess he spent pretty much the day here. They asked me to go meet him. I did meet with him or leave because they had it out at the Club 14. And I did bring up the thought of, of the idea of the, you know, consideration of our welcome center because of where it's placed right now, it's totally, it's, it's not very acceptable to the position that it's in. And I said that I think that at some point down the road, it'd be a good idea, uh, they would consider allocating some money or something to maybe, uh, a new center, probably in a more appropriate place. The traffic study that we're doing might be able to give us some hint as to what, what might be the best placement for that. So we'll see how, how that all comes out. We also had a meeting with, uh, several of us met on the Rad Bike Event that was here a couple of weeks ago, Grand Lobby, Lobby? Is it an S? Yes. He was the, or he's the mayor of Lebville and he's been the mayor for like six or seven years, but he kind of gave us an idea of the things that they do, how it worked for them. The big, the big thing, he said, is you gotta be able, you gotta be careful because he says you don't want to build this up to the point where it just overpowers your entire community. In Lebville, they have like three or four bike events throughout the summer. And he said that they've kind of capped theirs at like 1,600 bike riders because at that point, of that, of course, Lebville is only a community of like 3,000, 2,000, 3,000 people. It's a small community. But he said, you, so you do, we do have to take some precautions. There is an upcoming meeting, as a matter of fact, in the near future. Tamara, who is the person that kind of jumped in at the last two or three weeks before the bike event took place, she's going to be down and speaking to us again, beginning the planning for next year.
Okay.
So hopefully that, some of you guys can be present at the time. Let's see if I have anything else. I think that is all I have. And like I said, just that information I gave you guys about the, how the hotspot, go ahead and read it. I think it's, it's interesting reading what he's come up with. Mr. Valentine?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council. The mayor mentioned the Fishers Peak State Park Master Plan. They're gonna have public meeting at the community center on Thursday, November 18th from 5:00 to 7:00. In order to not have too many public meetings for the public, they can come and also in, in two rooms, we're gonna have the Fishers Peak Master Plan, but also our traffic study public, uh, meeting for, for the public's input and that. So two, two events, one night, same place, Trinidad Community Center. That's November 18th, Thursday, uh, from 5:00 to 7:00 at the community center. So that'll be, uh, that'll be a good discussion and a place for the public to give us their input on, on both. You also have a draft master plan. If council recalls, you approved a submission of a ready grant to, um, Dola for, for the master plan for the Fox West Theater. You have a, um, draft master plan at your seating place. Any comments or anything, please get them to me and we'll, we'll incorporate as needed. Probably be a, um, maybe a work session or something for more discussion, but right now it's, it's, it's an interesting, very interesting document with history and everything in it, so. And then this afternoon before the meeting, I, I emailed the city council a letter from our lobbyist, Debbie Wagner. And she is, she's going to have to move on. She's, you know, just some things are happening. And I think she's on, but...
She was.
She, she is giving us fair notice. And, you know, it would help us in any way to, whatever we decide to move forward with either another lobbyist or consulting, so.
Debbie, is there anything that you want to add to the discussion?
Mayor Rico? Hi. I'm not council members. And Mike and Les and Audra. This has been a tough decision for me to make. I have absolutely enjoyed working with Trinidad the past few years. I think we've seen a lot of growth and a lot of initiatives that have come to fruition. It basically is based on my family situation. And as I said, it's been a very difficult decision because I really love working with Trinidad. And so I have told Mike and the mayor that I would be happy to work through any transition period in the next month or two.
You know, Debbie, you and I had a discussion this afternoon. And I fully understand, and I'm sure the rest of council will fully understand your reasoning. I know that when you came on board, you have provided us with information that we have never had, that I've known. A lot of the stuff that we learned about, we probably never would have found out. But because of your experience and being up in Denver, you have provided us with a tremendous amount of information, a wealth of information that we've been able to utilize. I really wanted to say is that anytime that I've had to go to Denver, I usually let her know that I'm going. And the first thing she says is, is there anybody that you would like to meet? Or do you need to speak with or any issues that you wanted to talk with? You're very well-known, you know, in that arena. And you have been able to provide, I know from me personally, when I've gone up there, a wealth of information. And meeting people and the legislators and all the people that I've met along the way is due to you helping me out and you helping this council out whenever we've been up there. So I just wanted to say, I fully understand your decision. But hate to really see you go, I really do.
Thank you. Well, I will be in Trinidad visiting. And feel free to reach out to me in the next month or two. And I'm happy to help out in any way I can. It's been a pleasure working with the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you, Debbie.
Mr. Valentine, anything else?
No, that's all in here.
Mr. Downs?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. First, congratulations to all the candidates and the election winners, but the candidates and, well done. I'm sure you're happy to have that over with. I'm melancholic that Councilman Goodall is no longer going to be with us, but...
I'll be here in spirit.
Absolutely, absolutely. Goodall, congratulations, everyone, and especially those of you who prevailed. And welcome, you know, to Mr. Thurman, and that's exciting. And I did want to say, I don't want to be accused of having a mutual admiration society, but Tom did a very good job last night. He did a live stream, and it was quite interesting. It was unfortunate because right before the results were announced, we lost it. But so we heard, we heard Mr. Goodall and Mr. Howell for like an hour and a half. And, you know, I was making dinner and feeding the ducks and the dogs and waiting for the big moment, and then it was gone. So, but we heard every word. And Tom was a great moderator and did a great job. The only other thing I wanted to report on is that I recently attended a CML Continuing Legal Education Seminar. It was October 22nd and 23rd. And it was wonderful. It was very good. I mean, it was a series of seminars over two days. It was a very good seminar. At some point, I would like to, you know, talk to you about some of the things that were discussed and that I learned up there. It was a very good, well-done CML, CLE. So that is all I have.
All I'm going to say, Mr. Downs, is, you know, you provide us with legal counsel. And I believe that you have done a good job for us. We also have a bank of attorneys that we use, SERSA, that between both you and them has kept us out of hot water. And, you know, I think it saved the taxpayers of this community a lot of money. There was a post, that was posted recently saying that you cost us millions of dollars. And that is not anywhere even close. But I just wanted to say that it takes a team. And sometimes, legal avenues require us, it necessitates us, to go out to get some additional information, which is what you do. And that is what we pay you to do. That's our, you're our legal counsel.
Absolutely.
And I just wanted to say, thank you for doing that.
Mayor, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Murphy, too, for his kind words. And, you know, I don't want anybody, I wasn't going to comment. I just, you know, since you brought it up. I don't want anyone to think that I'm trying to drive any kind of agenda or any kind of, you know, anything. ADA compliance is ADA compliance. And whether or not we have an ADA advocate in the community is really immaterial. And this council is not anti-outdoor dining. And there are just so many things I can say. But you know, and your collective conscience is clear, mine is individually, and you are always trying to do the right thing. And you're not going to let me ever do what I want to do. You're not going to let me control any kind of narrative. And I will always be respectful of all of you. And I guess I really just kind of bristle with the notion that I somehow control you when we all know that quite the opposite is, I mean, you don't control me, but I'm not trying to control you, is what I'm trying to say.
Oh, you know, this ADA thing, like I said, I'm just recently talking to other mayors in some of the meetings. They're all faced with the same thing, ADA issues across the entire country, this state. And some of them are spending, I know that Denver, Colorado had to take out a bond, I think, millions of dollars just to get their compliance under control. So anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, on to item number 10. We did that already. On to item 11, executive session for the purpose of discussing special I details of security arrangements or investigations, including defenses against terrorism, both domestic and foreign, and including or disclosure of the matters discussed by reveal information that could be used for the purpose of committing or avoiding prosecution for a violation of the law pursuant to CRS 24-6-402. For the security arrangements, motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call a vote?
DeBum?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Grego?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Okay, we'll take a break. We're not going to make any decisions when we come out. Mr. Thurman, your...